...to order is Monday, July 23, 2012, 7:00 PM. If anyone present may require special assistance to participate at this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to assist you. Your call.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember LeFever.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Clark is absent. And Mayor Fetter.
Are there any additions or deletions to nitrogen?
There's a few items on the agenda. Folks have questions that are regarding the recent termination action that we took. And I don't think we're prepared to address those issues at this point without an attorney and some of the same reasons we've given before.
Can I hear you, sir? Could we speak up?
Yes, please. I'd stated that there are a few items on the agenda for the proposed agenda for tonight about questions relating to the dismissals and the action that we picked a couple of weeks ago, that I don't believe we're prepared to address as a council without the representation, the same reasons we gave back then. Those specific ones would be number 16, Melissa Rosengrin's, number 17, Rick O'Neills, and number 19, John Esmondorst.
I understand there are some concerns there, but I would suggest, since they're on the agenda, that we would just go ahead and allow them to ask their question. And at that time, if they feel like to have an answer, due to those reasons, at least we'll have their question for the next meeting. We can be prepared for it.
Motion for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. We on first? Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Nay.
Tonight's agenda has been approved. With no additions or deletions, correct?
Correct.
What, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
That you go ahead and do it.
Make an appointment.
Yeah. And then we find out more information, and then we can decide on one.
Okay. Councilmember Crum is making the motion for me to appoint a temporary city attorney.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Scott Johnson. Is there any other questions or comments or discussion? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
I'll lay the temporary appointments and work with them on a temporary basis so we can make sure that the city is protected and we can move forward with some of these other items. Agenda item number nine, Andrew Francis, discuss day-to-day operations by the city.
I guess I just had some basic questions about day-to-day business that the city should be doing now that we don't have a city administrator. Before the firing of the previous city administrator, was there any thought given to operational continuity as far as between the previous city administrator and then whoever took her position? Who would be doing the training, making sure everything was, the new employee would be up to date so that nothing would be missed and fall through the cracks? So I know where I work, I know part of my boss's job, my boss knows my job, and I know about two or three other people's jobs too, in case something happens. There's never a void. So was any thought given to that before Angela was fired? Because now we don't have anybody to train anybody on doing anything.
Yes, I guess the question is from myself, answered for myself.
So it was thought about, so what steps are there to ensure there is that continuity?
The only one we have right now is that Marilyn is in place to see that some of the basic tasks are taken care of. And as she can attest, I'm sure she's putting in overtime and there's a lot of work.
Right. So we're putting in overtime because she's learning on the job, because no one trained her for it beforehand. So then that's not continuity, because she's learning it as she goes. That should have been taken care of before any firings were taken place, you know, like maybe a manual for the position or anything like that. I know there's a, that's kind of standard operating procedure in the public or in private business that you have a procedures that you go through that way. If you need to fill a position, someone can do it. And if she's having to learn on the fly as we go, I don't think that's a good use of her time or a good use of city dollars to be paying overtime just so that, I mean, we were late paying our city employees to the last pay period. That's an embarrassment to the city. And it's all because we didn't have any plan in place as to what was going to happen afterwards. Also, is there anything that you or any of the council members are doing that will ensure that there isn't a direct disruption in day-to-day operations, such as late paychecks to city employees? And if so, what? That council members personally are doing? Because the decision to fire was theirs personally. It wasn't asked for by any, the mayor or anybody else. So what will you do to ensure that nothing bad will happen to the city because of something that gets missed?
I think to address that, I think some of the issues that were, that we discussed in the past was the urgency to have a new clerk on, some of the things that Marilyn is doing, she won't do.
Well, what makes sure that new clerk knows what we do here in Logan? Okay, the urgency to get a new clerk in to help Marilyn? How do you know the new clerk will know what to do?
Help Marilyn? If basically we replace, would do the clerk administrator job, Marilyn wouldn't move up into that necessarily.
Right, right. No, I know, but who's going to say that that person knows what to do here in Logan?
Their qualifications hopefully will have.
Well, but they're not, I mean, they don't know exactly what goes on. How do they know what business software we use or, you know, anything like that? They don't know, that's why you need to have training or something like that. And obviously, we don't. So is there anything that the council will do to ensure that we're not going to miss anything, such as, let's say, the state sales tax return needs to be completed and submitted by the 15th? Was that done on time? No, it wasn't?
I did not do it. I believe that Angela did it.
She did do it?
She did.
So she did it after she was fired?
She actually did it.
She did, she had it prepared beforehand?
Yes.
Who will, so who will be preparing the outstanding debt obligation that's due in 17 days? If that, August 1st? I mean, does Marilyn know how to do that? And if Marilyn doesn't, is the new city administrator just going to be able to jump right in and take care of it in a couple of days if we get her hired before the beginning of the month?
Those are excellent questions, and I think there's got to be some priorities done. And one of them was getting those paychecks out. That was A1 priority.
Okay.
And you say they were late. I think an effort was made on Marilyn and even Randy's part to make sure that those got out on time. Some were late, but I think majority of them got out on time. Nope?
No, they were all, they were all on the gate late.
Okay. How about, does anybody know who will be in charge of the street road use report? Because that is due September 30th. So if Marilyn doesn't know how to do that, and we don't, either don't have a new city administrator or anyone doesn't know how to do it in the right way, we lose $12,000 a month. A month.
How about that one? We don't have all those attorney fees.
So this is the kind of things that were not considered before anything, any action was done. So now that, now that I've made you aware of these things, or is there anything you will be able to do to make sure that nothing gets missed?
I don't think we need to guarantee that nothing will get missed. We're down employee, just like we're down an officer. There are certain things that, you know, we're making do with less.
Okay, so potentially, we will be missing out on money and reports that are turned in on time? Is that what you're saying?
I was interrupted.
So if you don't, so you're not willing to guarantee that the, say, the street road use report will be turned in on time? That's $12,000 a month, and you can't guarantee that that will be done? Anybody will do anything to make sure that it gets done?
We will, we'll take that into consideration. That sounds like.
Okay. Well, we'll consider $12,000 a month.
Jeff, you can answer some time as well.
I guess that's all the questions I have.
Agenda item number 11. Renee Springston, noncompliance with ordinance.
I kind of had to rewrite this because it was geared mainly toward our three council members with the one missing. So, council members, I request it to be put on the agenda tonight due to your lack of capable and competent representation as the town of Logan City Council. I've tried numerous times to reach you by phone, leaving messages with specific requests to return my phone calls in regards to my concerns. Now, since I'm assuming I have your undivided attention, I would like answers. As a taxpayer and business owner in the city of Logan, I demand that my voice finally be heard and that you, Councilmembers Johnson, backslash Clark, and LeFever, act like the civil leaders you were voted in to be. The only question I have for the two of you pertains to the perceived violations in regard to the Logan Code ordinance 5.09, the removal of appointed officers and employees, the recent termination of Angela Windsor, city clerk, as well as the attorney, and chapter 55.05, lops livestock. I personally care less if you have chickens, mules, horses, or pigs. What I find frustrating as a taxpayer is your blatant disregard for our city ordinances which you swore an oath to uphold. So, other areas of concern include, but definitely not limited to, the Logan Code of Ordinance Chapter 47.04, littering in city parks, and Chapter 50.02, nuisances. So now that I am on the agenda, and each of you are not hiding behind not answering your phones, please explain to me why the two of you, Mr. Johnson and LeFever, refuse to uphold the state code as well as the city's code of ordinance? And what exactly is the reason behind the recent termination? And I also have a quote that I have revised. My vote may be the minority here while facing you each as board members, but it does not make me weak or wrong. To you two, the issues of morality, common decency, and upholding the law may be small issues. To the majority of Logan, as well as myself, they're huge. I have a voice to speak out, and that's what I'm doing. It is with hope and faith that I pray that you three board members have the clarity and wisdom, not to mention the moral philosophy needed to be leaders, as you move forward on these matters, as those any others, that you will come across in the future. This is a revised quote by Samantha Johnson.
Agenda item number 12, Ginger Schimmer requesting information on new competition.
I really don't have anything to add after what I said at the last meeting. I still think, I still like resignations, Mr. LeFever, Mr. Johnson, and from Dee Clark. It's pretty obvious that you are not representing the people of Logan. I don't know if you read the letters, the editorial in the World Herald the day after our last meeting, in which he questioned whether you remembered the Constitution, whether you remembered that we are the people, whether you remember the Gettysburg Address, the government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I think those are the positions that are mentioned in the agenda, that we should have three new positions open.
Agenda item number 13, Linda Francis.
My first questions tonight are for Councilman Crum and Mayor Fetter. I'm wondering how long have you both served our community in the positions of councilmen that were made?
I'm on my third term, so I'm not sure. I was part of the term one time and part of the, more than eight, 10 years, somewhere along there.
Mayor Fetter.
I served eight years on the council, and I'm in my second term as mayor, so two and a half, two and a half years.
And where are the city council meetings usually held?
In the bubble room, back there.
Okay. So how long have they been, has it been needed to be held in a room this size?
Last.
Since March 26. Thank you. So prior to that time, how many, just given a, just a basic estimate, how many citizens attended a meeting, each council meeting, in the time that you have served?
Zero, 10, probably.
Up to 10?
12, 15, maybe, one time.
Okay. Okay. And when so few citizens have attended, how many calls or contacts would you estimate that you have received per month during those time, during that eight- to 10-year period?
Well, once in a while, you get one in the morning when somebody's calling because the snowplow's going by at, you know, 6:00 in the morning, because, you know, they don't think they need to until 8:00 o'clock. But, you know, once in a great while, you get one, but not near as many.
Okay, so in general, you're saying less than five to 10 a month?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So would you consider it unusual for a city council meeting to have, say, more than 25 citizens present? Yes?
Yes.
You're saying that? Okay. And since March, what would be the number of calls that you have received, would you estimate be, that you have received per month from the people, the citizens of Logan?
35, 40.
I think it was about 25 on one night. And there was also at the front door and the back door too, at the same time.
Okay. Considering all the contacts that you've ever had made, pro forma or personal, are the majority of them positive or negative with what's been going on? I mean, over the eight- to 10-year time? Are most people positive with what's going on, and that's why they're contacting, or are they negative?
Well, in past years, it's always been usually just a question. It's not a positive or negative.
Just a question, no.
So it's been neutral up until, say, March? And then since that time, has it been positive or negative?
Positive on what I've done and negative on what's been done.
And how many of those contacts have you purposely ignored and not replied to? Mayor Fetter, you're saying none?
I think I had one.
One? That you purposely did not reply to?
I forgot about it.
Oh, you forgot?
And it was too late by the time I could.
Okay, so it wasn't purposeful?
None that I can remember, but.
Okay, so my next questions are for council members, LeFever, Johnson, and unfortunately, Mrs. Clark is not present. Could you tell me why briefly you ran for the city council?
Briefly? That's a few years ago, but that's an evolving issue, but I ran to, as basically a public servant, to serve. I had no aspirations to be a politician or to be involved in politics, per se, and up until probably some of the dates that have been quoted here and shared, I think we'll all agree, themes have been very benign, very routine, probably, we would all agree, even bordering on boring, most of the time. We go through the mundane business of taking care, as many of you have witnessed, that it's started coming recently, many of the activities are just procedural, and we go through them and we take care of the business. My, my reason for serving was to contribute. There was, and continues to be, apparently, a reservation for serving, for contributing time, energy, and effort on the behalf of some of these tasks that need to be done to keep the city going. And I wanted to contribute. I was supported by friends and family to do so, and I had a belief that that's a good thing to do. That is something I value, is the freedoms that I enjoy, the opportunities to give back to a community, to contribute, to be a part of it. And that is the reason that I wanted to serve and to take part in it.
I guess the reason I ran for city council, I wanted to make a difference in Logan. I wanted to do things for the community. Do you have something you need to talk to me about? Okay. I'm kind of disappointed, to tell you the truth, since I've been on council, the city council since January was when I joined the council. I haven't been on the city council very long. I, I would say it's definitely, has not been a joyous occasion for me. I get countless threats, harassment, people come to the meetings and sit here and make faces at me, call me names. I tell other people from other communities about what goes on at the city council meetings, and they say, "Are you kidding me?" So I guess as a.
It's a cool year, isn't it? If you don't like it.
I guess that's my point exactly.
Please. Everyone have their chance.
I thought what I did was doing something right, or I would not have done it. I did not just outright do something for a hidden agenda or a reason of my own. Hopefully, once we can speak with an attorney and lay some light on this subject, some other people might feel the same views, but I'm just saying, you know, I'm really disappointed with what is directed at me and my family.
My question then, to the two of you, would be, how can you neglect for attendance at regular meetings? Postponing, setting the sewer rates and the water rates for weeks and months? Not, not obliging the public to make sure that a city-owned resource is used, be able to be used by the public to be, when they offer to, you know, make it better, to improve it, and, and at no cost to the city, that you ignore that? Seems to be your personal agenda? Because I think from the past, it's fair to state that if a citizen that's not on the council has a conflict with where a property line is, then it's usually that person that has to see to it that, that the property boundaries are, you have to, to go through the expense and not the city? How is it that you have neglected nuisance abatement? You have not filled positions on boards that are empty and have not been able to equalize them by gender, which is required by law since January? And noncompliance of requests for citizen information? How can you say that we should conclude that you are not neglecting your duties? And this is the third meeting, you have not answered a question? So I, I'm sorry that we seem contentious. That seems contentious to me. That seems that you are saying that you don't need to answer to the public. I agree with you, Mr. Johnson, shame on Logan for becoming complacent in serving. I wondered why Councilmember Clark did not attend the special, the special training on June 19th, but she's not here to answer that. I guess my other big question has been, what constitutes an emergency? And why would it be that the two of you would keep secret information from the mayor and Councilman Crum? That was so important that you would call a meeting, a special meeting, an emergency meeting, one day prior to a regular meeting? Simply to fire two city employees that have never been given notice as to why? I realize you're not going to answer me tonight. You have carefully packaged yourselves in a way that you don't need to answer, you don't feel that you are going to answer, until you feel that it's convenient to you. People are impatient about this. We feel that you have gone around, circumvented the law, and it's not right, and you haven't answered. So what other conclusion are we to draw but that it's your personal agenda? I agree with you, Mr. LeFever. Shame on anyone who has threatened anyone. That's not being a good neighbor, and I don't think that speaks for the city of Logan. I only know town people as being caring, considerate people. I know sometimes it can get a little unpleasant, but I don't think as a whole that speaks well. That speaks for our town. I don't know who's threatened you, but I do question sometimes, what is going on? And when you won't answer, when you won't give a response, I have nothing else to conclude other than it's your own personal agenda. I just, I just don't see what could have been that big of an emergency that you could, without going into an executive council meeting, which is, I believe, the requirement if you're going to fire someone. You should have called your meeting, adjourned to executive session, you should have informed Councilman Crum and Mayor Fetter what you thought the charges were, and then, because you were considering firing these people. Seems to me that you already had your mind made up. They weren't even, so they were dismissed without reason? When are we going to be informed? Do you have an answer to that? No? Okay, that's all, thank you.
Mayor Fetter. These people are on the agenda, they're supposed to be getting answers tonight, and they're being ignored.
Any responses?
Kind of kept going, there were a couple of issues that I did want to address.
Are you me?
Thank you. Sorry. A little blue up front. Linda, thanks for your comments. You made some points, I'm trying to make some notes over some of the things you went over. You mentioned, you made some accusations and you made some comments that I, you know, I had concern with one. You said neglect to attend meetings. I've heard this from a few others. I don't know where that's coming from. There's been no effort to neglect meetings. I think my record, speaking about me personally, I've had, I think, two, one, two meetings that I've missed in the four years that I've been on the council. That's a very high percentage.
I have one meeting that I missed for vacation that was planned several months in advance, and everybody knew...
Was that recent? Was that absent, recent, absence recently?
It was in May.
May, okay.
Yep. Other than that, the last one probably would have been a couple of years, two, three years earlier. So, I mean, I take exception to those accusations, that I'm not here, that I'm skipping out on meetings, or that there's any effort to avoid being here at the public's access, okay, to take questions or avoid anything. I've made it clear, I made it clear in, in the meeting that we had on the sixth, that personnel issues commonly are not discussed, and especially without legal representation. I, I'm not going to discuss them. It puts the city at risk. Will this information come forward? I hope so. Okay? I hope it all does. Okay? I'm going to, the first opportunity we get somebody to look at it, that's why I'm anxious to have an attorney yesterday, a week ago, to get this on there so we can get this moving, and so this mystery, these concerns that you have can be answered.
So why couldn't you inform the mayor and Councilman Crum?
They had access to the same information I did.
Prior to the Ju- July 6th?
Prior to it. So they, I have copied them in on all my communication. They have many of the same communication that I have.
Jenny, is that true?
I don't know what he's talking about, but yeah, we've got the information, but I mean, as far as why she was fired, I don't know why she didn't do anything wrong that I could see.
Mayor Fetter, do you know the reason?
I have since been given the possibility of one, but I was not informed ahead of time of everything that went on, so I did see his request for what he asked for, but I didn't see everything that went back to him, so.
Thank you.
Is there one wired where? Is there anything else?
Oh, well, did, are you going to answer why you're not talking, you're not responding to people that are calling you?
I've talked to, Renee gave us a letter at the last council meeting. I assume that's what she was calling about. I have not heard from her since. The only other one was Jim Medelman, who I returned the call to, and we spoke in, in my driveway at one occasion. Others have also talked to me and called me that I've spoke with, so I...
Like me, Renee?
Renee Springston, yes.
Then why don't you answer your phone?
I'm at work, I don't know when...
I call before people go to work, when they say go to work, I call lunchtime, so...
You're calling my phone at home?
I'm calling your phone at home.
I'm, I'm at work, I, I have not received a call. I've called already, I have not received a call before my, before I leave to work.
I can give you the paper that says exactly what I left on.
Okay.
So do you have an answering machine?
Pardon?
Do you have an answering machine?
Yes.
And do you check the answering machine?
Yes.
And is it erased before you check?
I cannot answer that. But yes, there were a couple that did leave messages prior to the, I think, the July 6th.
Mr. LaFever, have you...
As far as the skip in meetings, I, I've missed two meetings, I think, since I've been on.
Well, in a short period of time, that's quite a view.
Well, that's fine. One, I was on vacation, and the other one, I had a sick child at home and my wife works nights, so I'm sorry, I couldn't bring my sick children to a meeting, so I guess I couldn't come to the meeting.
How can we address the existing six out of the past 14 meetings?
Six. I'll get that here.
How far attendance seems a lot...
She's been gone six, but phoned in one, so was here for five minutes via phone call. Out of next...
And I can't answer for her, so, you know, if you wanted to be on the next question...
Is there some reports that's taken? I mean, don't they need to be present? Isn't there at some point, you've missed six, you've missed almost half the meetings?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I can't answer that, because I don't know. Anything else added?
As far as the phone calls, Bill called me once, you called me once, Renee's called me probably four or five times, and I apologize, I'm horrible at returning phone calls. The last time Renee called me, I was actually fishing with my children, so I didn't really want to answer it.
I'll excuse that one, because kids are important, but you guys represent us, it's very usable.
I agree. I agree, I should return phone calls more often, and I apologize for that. And a couple of the messages that were left, Bill, and I believe both those didn't ask for a return call, they were basically a statement, a position, and I took them as such. Bill, we invited you and your wife up to, to talk at different times, so, and that was, you know, turned down that offer. So, I mean, I'm not, certainly not avoiding conversation with you both as you're painting this picture. Okay? We've made it clear that, that we welcome your comments, and have talked about many of these issues with anybody that's willing to talk to us about. Okay? I realize, you know, that there's been a lot of emotion recently and a lot of heated feelings about it, and you've, you've shared those with us, so I take it at that.
Agenda item number 14. Terry Francis.
Some of the points that I wanted to bring forth with the paper test on, but I did want to reemphasize the fact that the decision that was made on July the 6th for the termination seems to show that there was no strategic plan in place to ensure that the continued compliance with the required elements of day-to-day operations and the specific reports due to the different state departments would be upheld. I think that's a, a very important factor, and actually a dereliction in your duties. Also, as far as procedural things, the special meeting that was called on July the 6th should have shown that the council was aware of how to, the procedure should be taking place when it's a, a discussion or decision for that type of thing for an employee would have been done. There should have been a, a, go into a closed session, a discussion should have been held with all those people on the council informed of all the information that was available so that when they come out of there, an informed decision could have been made. That didn't happen, that's a, that's a problem with your procedures. I want to make a specific question, though. On July the 9th, I made a specific request under the Freedom of Information Act for three documents, three, three simple pieces of paper, okay? As of this date, I have not received those, okay? It seems funny that certain emails will be able to be released to Fox 42 within a 48-hour period of time from that, and I'm just curious as to what do you consider a reasonable timeframe for me to receive my Freedom of Information Act, the three pieces of paper that I've requested? What would you consider as a reasonable amount of time for that request? And that is a procedural thing and nothing to do with, other than procedural.
According to the state of Budland, they mentioned a seven to 20-day turnaround time?
Seven to 20 days is, is a reasonable period of time.
Was the number they gave me, I have no other...
Okay. I'm, I'm looking for three pieces of paper, is all I'm looking for, and it's going to take you...
I don't remember your request, it's in the ground, you have it or no? I don't have it with me. I emailed you guys, I believe it was the request for the special meeting.
Right. Right. It was July, Monday morning, July the 9th, the request was, was presented at city hall, and to this date, I've received nothing of those three simple pieces of paper of the procedures of the city council for that special meeting of the 6th. And I'm, and reasonable period of time? It's sure funny that I can't find, I can't get mine from the city, but it's sure easy to get emails released to Fox 42 within a 48 hours. How did that happen, do you suppose? You can't speak to that? Do you know anyone that could speak to that, that I could ask? You have no idea who I could get to, to know how those emails got to Fox 42? I sure would like to see those as soon as possible within the reasonable timeframe.
Did you just say no, that you do not know how that information got to Fox 42?
That was his, I believe that was it. You have no idea how the, the emails that Fox 42 showed on their television were presented to them? Do you, those, those emails...
You read the paper!
Now, nevermind, you're going to answer that. So I'm, I'm still waiting for, for my response. If I don't receive that within the reasonable timeframe, then my next option will be, just don't think that I'm going to tell you.